All right, now we finally got it going. Lay it on me.
Okay, so I just need some clarification. So R channel is...
R channel is...
R resistance whenever we're in saturation and R out is the resistance when we're in triode.
No, R channel, RCH, is the resistance when you're in triode, and a little R out is the resistance when you're in saturation. Let me sketch those real quick. Let me, I didn't play with the internet either. Anyway, let's, uh, so remember if you plot the curves, you get the following. One over the slope is the output resistance, and what region is this? And then one over the slope here is the channel resistance, and what region is this? Boom, there it is. All right, and you want me to work the quiz?
Okay, so if you had...
Hold on a sec, let me do something here real quick. All right, let's make sure we're still going. All right, so what was the question now? The quiz? Wasn't the PMOS gate drain connected, the NMOS gate drain connected, and then a resistor?
Yes.
I don't know, that's pretty tough. Let's do it. And what were the sizes of everything?
Uh, the PMOS was 30 by 2, and the NMOS was 10.
All right.
And the resistor was 10.
And what was the question asked for? The voltages and currents, or just the current, or? All right, so this is 5 volts, this was 30 by 2, this was 10 by 2. Does everybody agree with that? So would everybody agree, since we've done this, I'll, I'm gonna do it relatively fast. This is 5 minus VSG. Everybody agree with that? And would everybody agree that's 5 minus the square root of 2 times whatever ID is over 40 micro times 30 over 2, minus point 9?
Why do I decide to use that?
Why do I decide to use what?
That change VSG to...
This?
Yes.
I've done that all the time. I mean, I could write it as ID and do more math, but I know that VSG equals the square root of ID times 2 over KP times W over L plus point, or plus the threshold. Why not use that? Are you asking why do I want to minimize my work? Is that what you're asking?
Is that what it does?
Ah, well, let's find out. What's this voltage? Let me finish. What?
She asked why not just use VSG. In essence, what we're really doing is just V out, right?
Yeah, I'm just doing it a different way. I mean, I could write more steps, but I've already done this problem, so I'm just doing it something different. I mean, why do the same thing? You could go watch that on video. So now, what do I do next? Just move the 3 over, so it's 120. And then minus this stuff, and that's all over 10K. Yay? And ID is equal to 5 minus point 9 minus point 8, or 3.3, minus 2 times the square root of 2ID all over 120 micro times 10 over 2, divided by 10K. Yay or nay? Why the perplexed look?
Can you stop on your channel? That makes it easier.
I'm not saying, I mean, it's just different. I mean, it's all easy. It's an easy problem. It's really easy. I feel embarrassed giving it to you, actually.
When, well, then you need to... But, so like, because so sometimes you just go down and you're like 5 minus VSG, whatever.
You want me to do it that way? I can do it that way. You wanna do it? Let's do it that way. Let me, everybody, can everybody solve for ID here? It's one equation, one unknown. No, you can't, but you think you can. So go ahead and do, see that you can solve this, and I'll do it the other way. Yeah, it's the same thing. Yeah. Assuming you can solve for ID, you can plug ID back into the equations, you can get VSG or VGS. But let's go do it another way. Tell me if this way meets with your approval. This is the way I did it to begin with. Does everybody agree? 5 equals VSG plus VR plus VGS. Now what? No, it's the same thing. It all just goes to the same, it's gotta go to the same way. It's just doing things slightly different.
So, and therefore, it's often like that you just always use that equation for VGS.
No, what you should do, you should start out and write ID equals the square of VGS minus V threshold N squared times KP times W over L. Then, VGS minus V threshold N squared equals ID divided by KP times W over L. Then, you should take the square root of both sides and say VGS minus V threshold N equals the square root of ID divided by KP times W over L. And then finally, you should write VGS equals the square root of 2ID divided by, whoops, I left off the 2 here. KP times W over L plus V threshold N. Because then, you have more writing, and if you have more writing, you get more points, right?
Well, I understand how you get your VGS.
Well, I mean, I don't understand. You gotta use this one, right? And then to solve for VGS, I could go that way. You want me to do it with ID instead and solve for a VGS? The problem with that is then I've got a VSG and a VGS here, and I've got two equations. I've gotta solve for a VGS in order to get rid of one of the equations. So I gotta use this at some point. All right, any other questions that are gonna challenge me? Gotta have fun. What was the other quiz question?
The last one?
Oh, you want me to do the PMOS flavor? Let's do that, shall we? That would be a good test question. Show how to determine the output impedance of the cascode current, PMOS cascode current here. Sketch the schematic. I love that one, 'cause it's just some text after, I don't even have to generate a schematic. And then you have to generate the schematic. I don't know, this one's pretty tough. Anybody disagree with that? What is this AC voltage here? What is this AC voltage? So what's the VSG here? AC VSG. Zero. Source isn't wiggling, it's a DC voltage. Gate isn't wiggling, it's a DC voltage, so VSG is zero. So what is the GM VSG of this device? Zero, 'cause VSG is zero, so I go R out P. Any questions? So what does, just a sanity check for myself, what is this resistance representing this schematic? The output impedance of this PMOS. Where is this node in the schematic? BDD, where is this node? Right there. Now I gotta do this one, right? What's the gate voltage here? AC zero. So I go and I write R out P. GM VSG. Yay? Yay? Now what do I put down here? Well, wait, this node is still this node. What is this node? Looking good? Yes? Say again? Current flows down. Remember, the current flows down like this, and the reason this IT is going up is because when we define the impedance looking into some node, the impedance looking in there, we always apply a test voltage, and then we look at the current that flows into the node. So what's the trick here? We just got one part, we realize that's zero, so we can replace that MOSFET with an output there. Trick is current flowing through there is, whoops, I got this wrong. It should be the source here. Connected that to the drain. So what's the current flowing through here? What flows in, the water comes out, what is it? Yeah. IT, boom, you're done. Yeah, it's the same thing as the NMOS, except this little bit, teeny bit more challenging because our current's going this way, so we get a... Where? I don't know, let's find out. What do I do next? How about a KCL right there? GM VSG plus, and what's this voltage here? Does everybody see it's positive IT R out, 'cause I could flip it around in my brain, and it's the current flowing out? Okay? So would it be this voltage, IT times R out P, minus this voltage, which is V test, all over R out P? So the current going in is GM VSG, this voltage, IT R out P, minus this voltage, VT over R out P, plus the current going in, I test, equals 0. Before I go any further, any questions? Why it's not the right size? Weird, anyway. It shows up different on the recording. Proceed and stop?
Why isn't that making?
Where?
Your IT R out.
Okay, let me redraw this.
Because when the GM VSG plus the IT...
Wait, isn't this, this the same? Isn't this node and this node the same? So won't that voltage be IT times R out P?
Right, but your GM VSG...
This term?
The little I test goes like this?
Wait.
And then goes out up there?
Yeah, let's redraw it, 'cause this is, this is easy. Does everybody agree with that? That part of the circuit? Notice I drew it a little bit different, through the ground going up. Should I proceed? Yay, nay, okay? Then I got this. This is the drain of that device, this is the source. This is the drain of that device, this is the source. Whoops, source, drain, did I do it backwards? No, I did it right. Source, drain, source, drain. The gate of that device is at AC ground. So this is the VSG. So I can write this voltage is I test times R out P, and that's equal to the source, I test, times R out P, minus V gate, which is 0. Proceed or stop? So let's do a KCL on this node to be different. Oh, life is exciting. What are the currents leaving the node? Okay, GM VSG plus I test, this current, plus this current, which is I test times R out P, minus V test, all over R out P. Yay or nay? The pain! How's the pain factor, Coe? Oh, wait, Coe's not here. Gotta make sure they realize I noticed them. Right, Dane? Oh, wait, Dane isn't here. I love the blood pressure spike when they hear their name on the video. All right, proceed or should, are you like, don't proceed, this is so easy? What do I do? Multiply both sides by R out P, and I get GMP times R out P squared times I test, plus I test times R out P, plus I test times R out P, minus V test, equals 0. Or, V test over I test equals GMP R out P squared plus 2R out P. Boom! Too challenging? He didn't use the book, that's not fair. I wouldn't, if you have to do it on a quiz without using the book, I should be able to do it without using the book. Proceed or stop?
What else would you ask?
What else? I'd ask for the DC voltage is and all that. Question me? Lito?
No, I think we have, you have two resistors up there, two R outs.
Boom.
Those two R outs could be as if you have, like, you had two PMOS on the right and the left, right?
Boom, boom.
So those are both your R outs. Now, let's just say hypothetically that you only had one PMOS, and then you had an outside resistance. So therefore, your R out is only gonna have its own...
Homework problem, let's do it.
That's not what I'm getting at.
No, let's do it. Let's just do it.
I didn't want to do that.
Yeah, let's just do it.
Why not? Someone asked that as a homework. Is it your homework, PMOS or NMOS?
Yeah, but that's not what I was... It's just that we were kind of talking about it.
Well, it's the same thing, just what I just did. It's just you replace the MOSFET with a different R, it's exactly the same. It's easy. Let's do it anyway, let's do it for the NMOS, real quick, okay? Which is your homework, NMOS or PMOS?
This one's for a PMOS.
All right, so we'll do it for an NMOS. Apply my test voltage. Why do I have this voltage? Make sure these are in saturation. Okay, now I do the AC circuit. And I get the following. Any questions so far? Any questions on that schematic? So we do a KCL, let's see, we did the top one last time, the bottom one the previous time, let's do the bottom. So I get I test leaving, and then going in, I get GM VGS plus V test minus I test RS over R out N. VGS is equal to I test times R out N. I move, I multiply through by R out N, and I get I test times R out N equals GM I test R out N squared plus VT minus IT times RS. Move the ITs on this side, VT on this side, and I get VT over IT, which is R out cascode, is equal to GM, uh, wait a sec. GM, this is RS, sorry. Yeah, GM RS, so that would be RS. So it's equal to GM R out N RS plus R out N plus RS. Boom! Too slow? Well, then you're not measuring the impedance instead of the drain. You're measuring what the input impedance of the gate is, and it's infinite unless it's high frequency. There's no current flow.
But I was reading somewhere in your, you said that usually you would definitely determine the gate instead of actually...
No, when you're determining output impedance, it's always the same way. You apply a test voltage and look at the current that flows. You apply a test voltage and look at the current that flows. Just repeating over and over again, if you're finding input impedance. Question?
Yeah, so if you're gonna have, like, this two, um, NMOSes or PMOSes of different sizes, then like you pretty much have the issue up here, including R O and...
Yeah, R O N 1, R O N 2, GM N 1, something like that. Is? The threshold voltage? That's the AC plus the DC, so we bias it up, and then we wiggle the voltage around the bias. So when we wiggle the voltage, it's assuming we're above the threshold. So I'm standing in my yard, I turn my hose on, the hose is flowing, and so it's gotta be on, so it's above the threshold voltage, and I wiggle it back and forth for GM. For this, I'm applying the pressure here on the street, I'm wiggling it on the street and looking at how the flow changes.
So what, you said VGS is equal to AC?
For here, yeah. So let's look. This is AC ground. The current that flows through here is I test, it has to come out. So this voltage is I test times RS. So VGS equals 0 minus I test times RS. Yeah, I left the minus sign out there, yep. Looking good? All right, next question. Quiz me. Lay it on me.
Um, I think it's not a quiz, I guess it's more like something from the book, like the...
That's 'cause the book's written poorly. 272?
Inject current and score the current. I believe that I need a bit over 40 percent of the power. On the board?
Yep, here.
Yes. Uh, when you inject current into a D, which is the drain current, it's gonna increase, and then when I see the current constantly goes through, and then the drain current, the C is the same, because the G is the same. The gate part is same. So how comes the drain current is increasing? I know that there's more current injected.
Wait, so think of it simple, if I push more water into this, won't the pressure at D go up?
Yeah, the drain current is saying, you have...
No? If I push more pressure into the valve, won't the pressure here go up? Just think of it simple, if I take and I push more water into this pipe in this direction, I inject more water, won't the pressure go up?
That's pretty good.
Yeah. Hold on, the pressure goes up, right?
Yes.
And if I increase the pressure across the valve, won't the water in the valve go up? Because I'm pushing more pressure. So for example, if I turn on my hose in my front yard, and I increase the pressure, the water company increases the pressure, won't that increase in pressure result in more water flowing in my pipe, in my hose?
It's pretty good, but I don't have it on.
No, you leave it the same. You're standing there, you leave your hose running, and all of a sudden, the water company says, I'm gonna increase the pressure here. So they're injecting more pressure into the pipe. Won't it then, in fact, cause more water to flow in your pipe?
Yes.
Yeah, so the pressure goes up here, and the current flowing in the drain goes up. That's why we have the curve.
But on a curve there, it doesn't?
No, it does.
It's on your bottom.
Yeah, it does.
You have that difference?
No, it doesn't. If it didn't, then you'd have an infinite output impedance here. Look. If I'm right here, and I try to increase the pressure or the voltage across the transistor, doesn't the current go up? See it going up on the curve there? Doesn't the water flow go up? Even if I go to a cascode, it doesn't have infinite output resistance. If I go to a cascode and I say, oh, here I'm, this single transistor I'm operating here, I increase the injected pressure or the current, I go up, more current flows in the transistor. Here, it's hard to see, but if I'm operating right there and I increase the pressure, I'm gonna get a slight increase in current. If I don't get an increase in current, that means I've got a perfect current sink, the output resistance is infinite, but it's not. Maybe really small, but we're still gonna get some minor amount of current going into the transistor.
Because we know the ID goes to the T here, so it goes to the same.
Yeah, it's gotta go down through here.
And the ID's gonna change only when you change the gate.
Yeah, yeah.
When you change that one here, the ID's gonna be.
Yeah, the ID will change a lot with VGS and only change a little with VDS. Yeah. Next question. What?
So, or like that, wait.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Or then when you're injecting current in between M four and M two or not?
Yep.
Then your M two is fixed at whenever the I ref is.
Okay, so wait. So I'm injecting current in the middle right here, right? Which is what we just taught on page two seventy-two or whatever it was, two seventy-six, whatever, right? So I inject current right here. The VGS is staying constant, right? So doesn't that pressure go up on the drain?
It closes off M four.
You sure it does?
Your current is the same in M two.
Right, because now I've got water flowing down through here, current flowing down and through here.
So your ID is held constant through M two though?
No, it's not. I'm changing this potential here. This isn't tough, think.
But it's just changing your M four's current.
Yeah, it's gonna change the M four's current, but it's also gonna cause a slight increase in inherent current in M two because you're increasing the VDS. Look, if you push a current in here and this voltage goes up, doesn't the drain to source voltage of M two go up? If I inject a current in there, doesn't that voltage go up? Doesn't the drain to source voltage of M two go up? The drain to source voltage of M two goes up, doesn't the inherent current that flowing in M two go up? It'll also shut off the current that's going through here because you're changing the VGS. I know what you're thinking. He doesn't know what he's talking. He's trying to fool me.
No, I think you're lying.
No!
So, wait, but, okay, so in the current mirror, the whole point of it is to hold your current the same as what it is for here.
Yeah, but, wait, now in a current mirror, this is a current mirror. Now you're saying, hey, I got a current mirror, but I'm gonna change it. I'm gonna add this extra node in here. Because normally a current mirror only access from out here. So now we're conceptually trying to understand what's going. If we magically increase or inject like we did right here in the beginning of chapter nine. No, it's not academic magic. It's trying to figure out and understand what's happening, not just, oh, where's the equation? It's like, how, if I put a current in here, what's it gonna do? If I pull a current out here, what's it gonna do? If I change this voltage, what's it gonna do? Not where's the equation that's gonna tell me because I'm not gonna use my brain to think.
Okay, so if you're injecting current, it might make that go up because VDS is just like applying to the effect on the current.
But wait, when you inject the current, it's gonna make the VDS goes up. That'll do two things. The current here. Where are we at? The current here will have an inherent increase because of the VDS going up. The current here will start shutting off, so more of the injected current will be not just the inherent increase in here, but also the current that was flowing in M four.
So would that have any effect on your I ref?
Uh-uh.
Because the gates are tied together.
No effect here. How does anything I do over here get over to that gate? Remember, the gate's floating on an insulator in glass, right? There's no way that I do something here and it's gonna change the voltages over here. Now, assuming we're not talking high frequencies where we take the capacitances into account and get some feed through. These stay fixed. They don't move, no matter what we do over here, as long as we're tying those to gates. Yes?
Uh, so, okay, I see how you're doing this, but what, what part of what you're doing this one?
When you say this one, are you saying about injecting a current here?
Yeah, but if the.
It's only conceptual to try to understand, to get an understanding, even that's what it says in chapter nine. This is a conceptual thing. This is a qualitative thing. This is so you understand what's going on.
So what, what's the application for it? I know that it's the more injection, it's kind of all add one most.
There is no application for that other than when I go look. Here, let me show you a circuit. Everything I do has a reason. Let's see, where is? Oh, twenty-two. Here. What do you think of this circuit here? There I've got some cascode current mirrors. They're connected to these bias voltages which aren't shown, which go to gate drain connected V bias one and V bias two. And I have another current mirror, V bias three, V bias four. Hey, I've got this what's called a diff amp. You all saw in three twenty. It's coming in and pushing a current into those nodes. You know what? I've seen that already. I know this. This is not hard for me to learn because you already covered it, injecting the current. I already know current mirrors. I already know injecting. I already know what that's going to do. I know why this is a ten by two and these are twenty by twos and the rest of these N MOSs are ten by twos. These have to sink the current not only from this transistor and this one, but from these that are twice the size of the other. So we get an I flowing through there, an two I flowing through there or an I through there. So we get two I and two I. It's, oh, wait, that's exactly what it says. Questions?
Are amplifiers?
That are gonna be on the test that are gonna help you because this stuff you should have gotten a while back because this is right at the beginning of the class. What's that?
Are amplifiers?
Yeah, I said we'll do something like common source amplifier, whatever, VGS. Yes?
Another question is, is six forty-eight, is there a heavy cut for a day?
Six forty-eight.
Um, I just have a question. Uh, the first one, P MOS and the second, we know it's like uh, ladder, the first is C, the second is C, the first one VGS, the second one two VGS. That case, there has to be the L and the N both are the same. As it is different, it's gonna be two VGS.
These are just wide swing cascode biases where the voltage across them can go to two VDS sat.
When you do mirroring to others.
So this is a VGS.
Yep.
And this is a VGS plus a VDS sat, wide swing cascode that we use to generate that long L device, the MWS. Okay, this is a VSG below VDD. This is a VSG plus a VSD sat below VDD. Let's make sure we know. Let's go back and look at the wide swing cascode. Oh, there it is. Wide swing cascode. Let's do it again. Let me repeat what I just said. Oh, this voltage is a VGS. This voltage is a VGS plus a VDS sat. Which is generated with this MWS, wide swing. You guys are reading the book, right? Because these are things right out of the book. So there it is, long L device, four times the length or five length, and then we even go longer for the nanometer devices. This is where those voltages are. A normal VGS plus VDS sat. So what is VDS sat plus V threshold N? A VGS. This VGS is equal to this VGS plus this VDS sat. So wide swing. You should know that. That'll be on the test. If you don't know that, I'm gonna be aggressively taking massive points off because that's ridiculous. Yes?
Uh, getting back to the current injection.
You're killing me, man. Alright. What page?
You're drawing.
Uh, from two chapters away, two chapters away that we haven't covered yet.
No, no, when you just drew up there, you still had that.
I didn't draw anything up there.
I'm sorry.
I didn't draw anything. Here's the last thing I drew.
Nonetheless, uh, that one was, uh, when you said it at the beginning of the time, well, I have a year's fourth video. And that was just your basic current injection, right? Where you were going over. You could actually, not, not enhancing it better, but you actually do it in there. And then when you're actually adding another MOS bit, if that is producing current, that actually becomes your current injection. That's what makes your VGS drop.
Yeah, just.
Increase, right?
You inject a current in here.
Right, but that's.
Shuts this guy off. Causes this voltage go up, so the current this was supplying is now supplied by this, plus I get a little bit more because I've increased the VDS there.
Right, and so the current on the right hand side, that one's gonna decrease, it's gonna go from like ten micro, nine micro, eight micro, and so on.
For M four?
Yes, it's gonna decrease as you have your new uh, current increasing, and then it's gonna adjust for a new VGS minus the old VGS, right? So I mean, they're just gonna, it's all proportion.
Yeah, it's just gonna inject the current, so this guy will start shutting off because this node will go up. Get a slight increase in M two because its drain to source voltage increases, but then the extra current causes this to shut off and replaces this current.
Right, and then that VGS, that, like, let's say, let's call that the two VGS, right?
Yep.
That one is gonna decrease.
This two VGS here, this voltage, won't change at all, ever. The voltage on this gate will never change. The voltage on this gate will never change. They're AC ground. They do not change. They're out of my mind. As I put a current in here, this pressure starts to go up. That causes the VG which is constant to stay the same. And then the VS to go up, causing the VGS to go down. Here, if you and I go to the door.
No, I get it, but you're doing DC, right? You're doing something just DC.
Yeah, just DC. Here, let's say that I'm, you've opened the door and airflow is going through the door, and this is the door, right? So airflow is flowing through the door out into the hallway. So I come in and I say, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm going to come in and start closing the door so that airflow that's flowing through here, and the way I'm closing the door is I'm gonna inject other air in the opposite direction. It's gonna close the door, so now the airflow here is going to stop because as I close the door, no more air can flow through it, and all of the air will flow through this one. Or wherever. Let's wait and get a question from Charlie. Oh, wait, Charlie's not here. Wait, let's give somebody else a chance, man. Who else has questions? And let's try to ask questions about the test. Yeah, these are probably, conceptually, I would put on there.
Well, we'd be going over, uh, like, body.
I don't know.
Like temperature.
Oh, I can definitely ask you some temperature things, but remember, it's an open book test. Alright, man.
Um, I think you quiz.
Which one?
That quiz seven, I don't know if you should go to the month, but I just went and put up and then the you say two VGS and VDS, I mean, the doctor said you would quiz seven.
Okay, so I don't remember what quiz seven is, but let me give you some examples and see if I can answer your questions. So this voltage is.
That VGS?
I'm boring, aren't I? What is that in terms of VDS sat and V threshold N? So I give you a problem. I say, write all the DC voltages in terms of VDS sat and V threshold N. You are, holy crap, he's insulting me. Anybody not know that? What is this voltage? What is it in terms of VDS sat and V threshold N? Hold on. Now, I go over here because this seems to be a con, some concept that is foreign to everybody. And I connect a gate of something here and I connect the gate here. In your mind, and you need to burn this in your brain, this doesn't change. Stop making this change because it's like I'm gonna run a marathon and carry a hundred pound on my weight, on my back, alright? You're handicapping yourself when you put mental energy into this at this point. This doesn't change. This voltage is DC. AC equals zero. AC equals zero. Don't talk to me about this when I'm talking about AC over here because it makes me think this person isn't paying attention because I don't know how much more animated I can go through on this. Okay, so now ask me your question.
So the side, the other side, the first one, basically, like, L is thirty by two, the second one is sixty by two.
Did I give any prob, did I give problems like that? When I'm talking, changing, that's like, if you can do that, man, I'd be happy. If I can start putting various sizes in here and you calculate stuff, that would be great. But let's go finish this.
Does that mean you're gonna make them all the same size?
I don't know. Maybe I won't now. I mean, I think, I don't understand. Alright, so what is this voltage right here?
VGS.
How is this voltage here related to this voltage here? Why? There's a wire between them, okay? Any questions? What is this voltage, assuming we're in saturation? VGS. Same as this, VDS sat plus V threshold N. What's the voltage from here to here and why? What's this voltage? What's this voltage? So what's this voltage? Are you sure you're watching and using these videos? What's the minimum voltage I need to have here to keep that in saturation? By definition, the minimum voltage I need to have between the drain and the source is VDS sat. Can I have the minimum voltage here? Only if I redesign the circuit because the way the circuit's set up, I have a VGS there. What voltage does this need to be? Needs to be greater than VDS sat plus VGS. We've gone over this and over it. I don't understand the issue here. That test was long. Now, what was the thing we did right after this? We said, you know what? It would be better if we could somehow have a VDS sat across here and a VDS sat across here. So we had two VDS sat, so you know what we could do? We could go in and we could have a current mirror that could go all the way to VDS sat without shutting off. Something that would have characteristics like this right here. The wide swing. It goes all the way up to VDD. This node goes all the way up to VDD before the current shuts off. This node goes all the way towards ground, two VDS sat to ground before the current mirror shuts off. This one goes all the way to two VDS sat below VDD before the current shuts off. There's no pressure left across there. Okay? So what did I do? I said, hey, to get that, I need a VDS sat here. That means this voltage needs to be changed to VGS for this plus VDS sat.
Wait, wait, wait. You said that in our brain.
What? For AC?
Oh, we're talking about AC now?
No, I'm redesigning this part of the circuit for wide swing. Notice the change in colors. I will, but I wanna make sure we get the concepts there. And you can draw whatever you want when you're the professor, Professor Williams. Okay? VDS sat. You know, it's when you're a student, you never think about being the professor. Mine's in school, I never thought, one day that's gonna be me. I just remember thinking, man, I hate view graphs. You know what? View graphs are alright, the transparencies, where they'd get up and put the transparencies on the oh, an overhead projector and project it up on the wall, and then write on them. Alright. Does everybody see I'd have to redesign that? And if I did that, then what could this voltage be here? A VDS sat there and a VDS sat there. But only if I redesign this circuit. So let's redesign it. And one fourth, whatever. And this voltage is now VGS plus VDS sat. This voltage is now VGS. This voltage is, since there's a VGS there, VDS sat. And this voltage needs to be greater than two VDS sat. No other questions?
Do you have different currents going into each one?
No.
Then why separate them?
I think that's something you need to investigate, how you can generate this voltage and this voltage together. The problem is, if you put them in series like this, you can't generate a voltage which is only a hundred millivolts above this one. And still generate that. Think about it, that's one you need to think about on your own, you have to separate them to generate the appropriate voltage.
It's just, just for confirmation, that added MOSFET, that's called MOSFET.
This one?
Yes.
MOSFET wide swing?
Okay, yeah, right. So that one, when you adjust that, that's gonna generate a voltage for the new VDS sat.
Yeah, I want this voltage to be VGS plus VDS sat, right? So let's see, what happens if we put in, we derive one-fourth W over L? So first, all of the other transistors in the circuit. Have the following, ID equals KP over two, W over L times VGS minus V threshold N squared, right? Does everybody agree with that? But for the wide swing, still has ID flowing in it. It's equal to KP over two times W over four L times VGS. MOSFET wide swing minus V threshold N squared. Does everybody agree with that? And I want VGS MOSFET wide swing to be equal to the VGS up here. Minus VDS sat. Just to make sure I know that, I come back and I go, oh. This is the MOSFET wide swing, VGS wide swing. And it's VGS plus VDS sat. VGS plus VDS sat. Does everybody agree with that? Okay, so if I plug this in here. And I look at that, I go, oh, well, that's ID equals KP over two. Times W over L. Times four, times VGS minus V threshold N minus VDS sat. Squared. What? Oh, plus, yeah, thank you. But wait, what is VDS sat? So won't that be equal to KP over two, W over L times four, times two, times VGS minus. V threshold N squared? Won't these cancel? And then I get, hey. That worked out. I get the right VGS. If I make this four. For the same IDs. You sure you're reading the book? Yes?
Well, I remember the model, like, sort of, like, a little bit, a while back.
Yes? Yes? Yep, you have a specific question? Let's ask Adam. Oh, wait, where's Adam? Oh, Adam. Alright, startup circuit. Why don't I do the PMOS? Here's the test question. Sketch the PMOS flavor of the beta multiplier seen in figure, let's pick it up. Twenty point one four. Derive the equations governing its operation, how's that for a good question? Alright, we don't want you saying. I could've enjoyed that rainy weather, instead, I listened to a boring lecture. So I need to sketch the PMOS flavor of the beta multiplier to get full points. Which side does the gate-drain connected transistor go on and why? Yeah, because if I put it on this side, then the current's gonna train drastically with VDD, cause it's a VSG. With this. Does everybody get that? If I put it over here, then I get a VGS. One plus VSG three equals VDD, and the current's gonna change with VDD. Come on! Don't I beta multiply in the N MOS here? So this is K times wider? This is a good question. Don't I beta multiply in the P MOS here? Always questioning me.
If I understood it.
If I taught well, you would understand it, right? Tell me what to do. But, and I still don't teach well, so what do you do? Alright, so you're gonna tell me I should label both sides I ref? Wait, what? Really? Don't these force the same current through each side? Don't I have a larger K here, so the VSG four is smaller than the VSG three? Aren't the same currents flowing through? Oh, wait, there's an R here, so they're not really totally current mirrors, right? These are current mirrors, so they're gonna have the same size and same current. This is a good question, I thought you would nail this. Then I've been tears on my tests there, we don't want that. Alright. Tell me what to do. Determine I ref. Show that it's independent of VDD. Derive, sketch the schematic of the PMOS equivalent of the beta multiplier. Derive the equations governing its operation. Tell me what to do. Okay, I could do this lots of ways. I'll tell, do it the way I would do it if I was solving it myself, and I'll do it the painful way students would do it, cause they wanna feel pain. I would look at this and I'd go, hey. This VSG three is equal to this voltage here. The current that flows in R is I ref. So I could write that VSG three is equal to I ref. Times R plus VSG four. Yeah, but some people ain't liking that. Was that American Idol, that, some people ain't liking. Uh, that's probably too old of a reference, that's like ten years ago or something. I know, that show's been on forever. Okay. Yeah, it's final season, and I've never watched a single episode, the only reason I saw that is because it was a commercial. Alright, tell me what to do. That's right, VSG three equals the square root of two I ref. All over KP times W over L plus V threshold N. VSG four. Equals the square root of two I ref. All over KP times K times W over L plus V threshold P. Then I can write that, let's see if I can, the square root of two I ref. Over KP. Times W over L. Times one minus one over root K equals. I ref times R. Should I continue, or have you seen this already? Yes? This one? The potential from here. To here is VSG three. It's also ID, I ref times R plus VSG four. So VSG three equals I ref times VSG four.
Why you plus, then, VSG four is, why would that voltage from minus two on the gate support?
It's this. VSG's three, VSG three's this. This one? What's the voltage drop across here?
I have, I ref and R.
Okay, what's the voltage drop from here to here called? So isn't the pressure from here to here either called VSG three? Or I ref R times VSG four? Plus VSG four? Tricky. Yay? So should I continue? Divide both sides by R. Move the R inside here, so it's R squared. Divide both sides by square root of I ref. Square both sides, and then I get I ref. Equals. Two I ref. Over R squared, KP, W over L. Times one minus one over root K squared. How's that different from what we derived for the N MOS flavor? Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have had that in there, thank you. My brain was shut off. It's the same. Okay, so now let me do the problem the way the students would do it, cause they like to feel pain. But before I do, are there any questions? Cause I think recognizing this potential and this potential that are the same, that's good for me. You guys don't like that. So let me do it a different way. Looking good? So this is VDD. So let's do it the way students would do it. What's this, that hopefully do it right? They label everything to begin with, so that they minimize the mistakes. And what's this potential? Okay, and then this potential is VDD minus I ref. Times R. Minus VSG four. Equals VDD minus VSG three. Yay or nay? And then I can write. I ref. Times R equals. VSG three minus, or how about, let's not even do that, let's just write plus VSG four. Over here, so we do it exactly the same as what I had. And then you can go through the previous derivation. Let me do one more of these, and you help me. I don't wanna do it, I want you to do it. Questions? How's the pain factor? Untolerable? Intolerable? Do you think this class would be easier if you had better Circuits one and two preparation?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
A lot of stuff would be easier with better circuits.
That's why I'm teaching them, this year, or next year, I'll teach fall and spring Circuits one, the following year Circuits two.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that will, awesome, you know, yeah. My entire human being career was invented and taught by you.
You wouldn't like it, because you need a break from so much homework. Yeah.
But I mean, if you spend a pain for this education, it's to actually get an education.
No, I mean, I don't like it when you say I don't learn anything. Alright, so everybody see what I did here? This would be a good test question. I don't know what's tricky anymore. Alright, tell me what, what's the trick then? Yay! Does everybody see that? Got I ref flowing through here. Got K I ref flowing through there, why?
Well, on the right side, you reference R as I ref. So, since the left side has a larger, um, W with, uh, it would be, you know, whole part.
Right on, so that's K times wider than this, K times as much current. Tell me what to do. I want full credit.
Why wouldn't the other one be I ref?
Cause on the mirror, they're the same size, so the same current flows through each side. Here, this one's K times wider. Yeah, but I put a resistor in the source to drop the extra voltage. Yay or nay? Tell me what to do. I'm not, I'm gonna, this, I wanna re- I'm not, this I want a really, 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 really simple answer because I want you to get a hundred percent. Tell me what to do. You're working the test. Tell me how you go. You're thinking too deep. I'm not asking anything deep. No, I go VSG three. VSG four plus minus I ref. Times R. I do that because when I start labeling things like that, it makes it a lot easier. I don't have to think deep. Then I can go, oh. VSG three equals this voltage plus this voltage. Now what? I mean, before I move on, does anybody have any questions on that? Wait, I'm not understanding the challenge. If I have, this is ten by two. And this is forty by two. And I have ten microamps flowing through there. Their VGSs are the same. This is a current mirror. This is what all of chapter twenty is about. This is four times wider with the same VGS. Okay, if there's ten microamps flowing through here and this is ten by two and this is ten by two and the VGSs are the same. Then there's got to be ten microamps flowing through there. Now up here, I make this one wider, but you know what? They're not mirroring the VGS, VSGs. I've got this extra resistance that drops the voltage. Looking good? Looking good? Tell me what to do. Yes? Here's what's in my mind. Man, I'm a crappy teacher. They're still not getting this. Here. Wait, these VSGs aren't the same? Resistor. Well, let's say I pull the. Different than VSG three. It'll be less than VSG three. If I remove the resistor, they're not the same VSGs either because there's no current flowing in this. There's nothing there. If I make R go to infinity, what happens to the voltage drop across the resistor? Goes to whatever the power spice is. It's an open. You have to do this voltage minus this one. You can't just plot one node or the other. So if you plot the node voltage right there, you plot five. Now it's not showing the voltage drop across the resistor. Remember last lecture I did that? Oh, I also took this thing home and fixed that where you start up LT spice and it gives that error. Oh yeah, it's not good. Didn't like that. Eighty-six program files. I put it in the upper so it didn't have a space in the file. Does that make sense? I guarantee if this is working and it started up, there's a voltage drop across the resistor. Yeah. Okay. Well, how do I proceed? Are you sure we want to write VGS or VSG equals that or should we write ID equals KP and then solve the algebra? I should? No, I'm going to write VSG three equals. The square root of two K I ref. That's the current flowing in there divided by KP times W over L. Plus V threshold P. VSG four equals the square root of two I ref. Why do I use I ref for VSG four and K I ref for I VSG three? That's what the current's flowing in there. Do I need to proceed? Nah? Yes? Well, K is given. It's something in the design. This one? Oh, the K is used here. Wait, backing up more fundamentally. You need to ensure that this voltage here is equal to the sum. If you make these two the same size. And they have the same current flowing through it, there's zero volts left to drop across the resistor. If there's zero volts across the resistor, how much current flows in the resistor? Zero. If someone says zero volts across the resistor, both sides are at five volts. And there's no current flowing in it. There's no pressure reason for the current to flow in it. Okay, so I got to make this voltage larger than the VGS of this, so I have extra voltage to drop across that. Here I'm doing it by reducing the VSG by increasing the width. So for the same current, I make this wider. It doesn't have as much pressure to turn on. Just if I go from a one-inch valve to a four-inch valve. I'm not going to need to turn the valve on as much to get the same amount of water flowing. Here, the way I'm doing it is I'm putting more water in valve that has the same, turned on the same. As this one, so that I get a larger voltage here because more current's flowing in. And then this voltage is less because less current's flowing in this side. Yeah, so this one. Yeah, so this one, I make this one same currents, but then I multiply up the K of this. So that I get a smaller VGS, VSG when it turns on, so the extra voltage of this guy is dropped across the resistor. What's the, what's the advantage of this one versus this one? This one dissipates more power. This one. I got five K plus one I ref flowing in this one and I only have two I ref flowing in this one. Here, I gave, I'll give you another quiz. I already told you this in the class. Let's see if you remember. Two black boxes. This one. And this one. Can't see what's inside. How do you know which one has the Norton and which one has the Stevenin? Measure, try to measure the current, you get one amp. Get one amp. Try to measure the open circuit voltage, you get one volt. You get one volt. Put a resistor here of one ohm, you get half a volt. Put a resistor here of one ohm, you get a half a volt. How do you know the difference between the two? You know my thought process isn't incoherent. What did we just talk about? Put a capacitor. This charges in one ohm times the capacitor. This will charge in one ohm times the capacitor. Again, my thought process isn't incoherent, so how did I get to this point? Which one dissipates more power? Is one hotter than the other? Yeah, this one, right? This one's going to generate one watt of heat. How much is this one going to generate with no load connected? Nothing. So you can feel the box and this one has got the Norton. The hotter box has the Norton. The cooler box has the Stevenin. See, now when you go on an interview and they try to trick you, you'll know the answer. Questions? Common source with gate drain connected loads. We'll cover that after the test. When we come back on Tuesday, I'm going to review for the test, so you have one more chance to, so I'll go through and tell you things you should study. You have one more chance to ask questions.
So we've got like. Chapter nine.
Chapter nine, the homework from chapter nine, examples, the end of chapter problems, then chapter twenty. Uh, you, no one's asked me anything about the regulated cascode. So it's easy. It's the same old thing. Study the, study the chapters. The examples in the chapters and the end of chapter problems. Study your homework problems. And the quizzes. That's all you need to study. No, a wide swing means a cascode that can have two VDS sat across it. Normal cascode has a VGS plus a VDS sat. Just what I said here. Chapters nine and twenty, first part of twenty-one. Examples, the end of chapter problems, homework quizzes, you know, like startup circuits. So those quizzes look the same to you, so when I say derive the output resistance of the cascode. That's the same as here's two gate drain connected transistors with a resistor in the middle. Those are the same to you? Does, does the first problem I worked today look like a current mirror? Looks like part of one. It's, you know, PMOS resistor, N MOS. You tell me it's not even over. Do you have a specific question you want me to work? Yes? She didn't ask about the startup. I just mentioned it. Did you ask about the startup? I thought you asked about these, the beta multiplier, the startup? Oh, I thought you wanted me to work the beta multiplier for PMOS. Oh, wait, maybe I'm thinking of the PMOS current here. Alright, so let me do the startup. Let's do that again. Test question. Sketch a beta multiplier circuit. Indicate how the circuit could be in a non-startup condition. Uh, let's see, let's go back to our N MOS source follower or N MOS beta multiplier. There's the beta multiplier. How would I be in this problem with startup? Yeah, how's it off? Tell me an example. Explain to me on the test where I'm not reading your text and going, they're just writing a bunch of BS. I think I'm going to take points off. Think I'd ever say that? What? VDD. What's this voltage? No, it's shorted to VDD. Zero, zero. That's the situation where the circuit won't start up. That's bad. That's a stable condition. Questions? So then I say, I don't like that. I'm going to put a MOSFET switch in between those two nodes. Then I'm going to take and I'm going to pull, let's do it a little differently so you get the concept. I'm going to pull because before I put a PMOS there, I'm going to put a big resistor here. And then I'm going to come over here. To a transistor. Okay, so let me ask you this and I'm going to cringe. How much current, before the circuit start up, how much current flows in here? Zero, right? Gate source voltage is zero. That's the problem. So what's this voltage and why? This voltage? There's zero current flowing in here? So what's this voltage if zero current's flowing in R big? VDD. Anybody not see that? If someone says zero voltage across the resistor or zero current flowing in the resistor and you know one side, don't think deep. The other side's the same voltage. Does everybody agree with that? What does it do to this transistor with VDD on the gate? What does it do to these two nodes then? Shorts them together. Well, now this drops from VDD and this goes up from ground. Well, wait, if it goes up from ground, there's going to be a current flowing in here when it starts up called I ref. There's going to be a current flowing in here then that's called. Current mirror, mirror. I ref. And if I ref. Times R big. Is greater than VDD. This node's going to move. What's the lowest this node can go to? Can't go any lower than ground, right? So this node will pull to ground and when it gets pulled to ground, what does it do after the circuit is started up? This turns off as this goes to ground. And then this isn't even in the circuit. What did I use before for this R big? A long L PMOS. Could use two of them if I wanted. It's not a startup capacitor. It's, if you use. You could use one or two because they're diode. They'll leak with this off. So they're just diodes leaking to the node and pull that up. But then what you don't want is this VDD gets higher and higher and higher and higher. You don't want these to pull this node up and accidentally turn this on. Because then you get the shorting. Remember we went over this where you get the current that starts to go up like that. Alright, any other questions? Yeah, so then the current goes through here, causes the current to leak, the VGS to go up, and then it snaps because of the positive feedback to the proper state. And then this has the current now flowing in it, which causes a voltage drop across this. Pulls this node down low enough to shut this off and the startup circuit isn't parked. Question? So then that causes it to go through the normal startup action. Since this is a current mirror, mirror's over to here and I get a current flowing. The current flows through here, drops a voltage across that, causes that voltage to go down. Shuts this off and then it's out of the circuit. Yeah, I mean, you still have the current here. Flowing in the circuit. But I mean, it'll probably be even less if you design this right because this will go into triode and start to shut off. And so it controls the current. By doing this, you can, you regularly control how much current flows in the circuit. Are you learning anything? We'll see how the projects go. Projects. Yeah, you can do all kinds of stuff. It depends on the particular application. What I don't want you to do is, oh, that's what's in the book. Let me use it because I don't understand anything else. I want you to know the trade-offs. Well, why would I? Want a transistor? Why would I potentially want to use this circuit? Well, it could actually end up lowering the power if all my basic sizes were this size, the K size. And I could mirror off this for forty by two devices, then I'm only burning one I ref here. And then not four times the current. So if I connected this off. To forty by two devices, I would have only, and there were forty microamps and everything else, but this is only ten. That's better than having forty and forty. So this actually dissipates more power. Something like that. Any other questions? Of course, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions on Tuesday. For the regulated drain? Yeah, you want to control the VDS of the bottom device. Alright, any other questions? Because if not, we're going to call it a day and you can ask your questions on Tuesday. Pause for a reasonable amount of time. Alright, have a good day, we'll see you on Tuesday.